Welcome to the August 27, 2015 Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. Vice Mayor Doug Young has our prayer and then our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Boy Scout Wesley Nance, who's with Troop 398 at St. Mark's Methodist Church. And also would want to add, as you say your prayers tonight, you'll notice that council member Skels Harris is not here and she is not feeling well. And so if you'll keep her in your prayers and thoughts for a quick recovery and good results.
Please join me in a moment of silence.
Wesley, you'll come to the podium, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Nance. Do have one, not necessarily ceremonial item, but we have an introduction tonight and we'll turn that over to City Manager Alliance.
I'd like to bring Fire and Rescue Chief Mark Folks forward. As you know, Chief Folks came to work for the city beginning Monday. Chief Folks previously had served as chief in Greenville, Tennessee, and had a long career as leading up to a position of Assistant Fire Chief with the city of Knoxville before he went to Greenville. So we are very excited to have Chief Folks on board. He brings a wide range of credentials and experience, including some leadership positions in statewide organizations. And his focus on communication, firefighter training, firefighter safety, and service to our residents really made him the best choice for the position. So we're excited to have Chief Folks on board.
Thank you all. I'm very excited to be here. Look forward to serving this community. I've met a lot of the staff already of the Fire Rescue Department and it's a very good staff and the city staff as well is very good. And I've kind of reiterated to our firefighters, I've essentially got two main focuses in my job. One is to provide the tools, training, and education and equipment necessary for them to perform their job in the best manner possible. And number two is to promote our fire department, both at the local level, state level, and the national level. And I plan to do a very good job of that for you all and serve our citizens very well. Thank you.
Chief Folks, we're glad you're here. Okay, we now have several items on the consent agenda there before you. Any questions with anything that's on the consent agenda?
Mayor, hearing no objections, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Would have one more ceremonial item that I skipped tonight. Want to specifically, I think we have a council member who has a birthday tonight. Is it 51? Is that right?
Almost, yeah.
Almost?
Basically.
Yeah, Councilmember LaLance, happy birthday.
Ah.
Congratulations. Check that off the list another year. All right, well now move into the minutes. You have the July 30, 2015 regular meeting, August 6, 2015 special meeting, and the August 6, 2015 regular meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Now moving to third readings, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading Ordinance 15041, to rezone an area located along Joby Jackson Parkway to heavy industrial HI district.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into first readings and item 4A, we have a letter from the city attorney regarding Ordinance 15047. Ms. McGannon.
Mayor, members of the council, City Judge Ewing Sellers suggested that the city amend its ordinance about the move over law to match what the state has done to expand that law to deal with utility vehicles and solid waste vehicles. That seemed a very good idea to the city utilities and solid waste department. And they and I bring before you an amendment which expands the law to accomplish the same scope as the state law, and I recommend its adoption to you.
Ms. McGannon, the, just for clarification for me, like the garbage trucks, if they're on Northfield Boulevard, they're obviously in the right-hand lane when they're picking up the garbage. There is no lane to clear to get over and not pass them, so is it, is it just?
If you can't, you can't.
Okay.
It's only if it's possible to do so is the law applicable and would there be any consequences for failure to do so?
Yeah, generally when we're dealing with the police officers, they're off on the side of the road and we're leaving a lane between them. And I'm trying to think of any scenario that the brush truck or garbage trucks or, maybe the utility trucks would be a good example.
I mean, when they're doing the street cleaning, you know, occasionally it'll be on a multi-lane road and so you want to go around them, for instance.
There's no other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll consider for passage on first reading, Ordinance 15047. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, we just did that. I apologize. We'll move to the letter from the city attorney regarding, regarding Ordinance 15049.
Mayor, members of the council, put on your table tonight a substituted version of the ordinance that I would like you to consider. The ordinance that you received in the packet, as well as with the slight revisions you have before you tonight, reflect a situation that has arisen over the past two years with fireworks. The council will recall that you amended the fireworks ordinance a number of years ago because we had had problems with people misusing fireworks and using them as weapons, both towards people they knew, strangers, and our police officers. We did not at that time clearly prohibit mortars that were part of the type of firework that is referred to as a cake, where there are multiple mortars part of the one firework, although we did clearly prohibit mortars that were of a one-and-a-half-inch dimension or larger and reloadable fireworks. The amendment that is brought to you tonight is intended to address the cakes because we have found in the past two years that those were being misused similarly to the single mortar fireworks, and we wish to prohibit their sale or use within the city because of the hazard that they present. The amendment also tries to clarify how lawful versus an unlawful mortar is to be identified by specifying how the dimensions are to be measured. It also tries to address a problem that had been common in the past two years of firework sales where whether or not a mortar was of a lawful or an unlawful size was obscured by packaging, by indicating that if it is not clear that the mortar is, the firework is either a lawful mortar or that it's not a reloadable, that it can be presumed that it's unlawful. It specifically was amended as a result of some discussions that I've had with one of our larger fireworks vendors locally to try and make clear that the firework seller could try and remove the packaging or do some other act to demonstrate to the police officer or the fire department official or the codes official that it was a lawful firework by either taking the packaging off or taking the packaging off, one, taking a photograph and showing the clear dimensions and having that with the product. So we've explored various ways to make sure that both the seller of fireworks, the purchaser of fireworks, and the police officers who are most likely going to be enforcing for compliance will be able to determine whether or not the standards have been met. And so this language represents input both from the police department and from fireworks vendors. I'm not representing to you that everybody is totally happy with every word, but it seems to be a feasible compromise which should be workable. And because of the hazard presented by not regulating these multiple mortar cakes with large dimension tubes, we are recommending that you amend the ordinance to exclude them. And by acting on it now, you should have sufficient lead time for persons who may be seeking to sell for this New Year's Eve fireworks season. Be happy to answer any questions about it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is the, or what would be the penalty, say, I don't know if that's the right word, the punishment, for someone who had one of these and still considered to be legal and they fired one of those at someone?
If the police could prove that it was fired at somebody as a weapon, criminal penalties for, you know, assault would be applicable. So, you know, the ordinance violation is a civil offense and is not dealing with criminal conduct. They would be able to bring, depending upon the seriousness of the, you know, event, how clear the proof was, either a misdemeanor or felony charge for trying to use it as a weapon or injuring somebody. So that's kind of separate from what we can do in the ordinance structure.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I'm asking is, you know, my feelings on this is this might be more than what I'd be wanting to do. I mean, you know, I'm trying to figure out, is there a, the first I heard of it was what I saw on the, on the agenda last night when I started reading the agenda, so I don't really know much backstory except that I like fireworks. I think there's a lot of things that can be used as weapons against people. You know, somebody could throw a baseball bat at me or at a police officer or whatever, and it's, you know, there is punishment for doing so. And so I guess I'm just trying to figure out if, if there is a way to make the punishment, make sure that, you know, people understand that if you do this, you know, you're going to be punished because we feel this is a very significant, serious threat to someone's safety to fire a two-inch mortar at somebody.
Well, one of the difficulties, of course, is that fireworks are at night where it is hard to see who set it off. You see the resulting injury, and there's such a short period of time in which fireworks are lawful that it, you know, my impression from the police department, it is very hard to, to control this. One of the things that suggests that this is an appropriate thing to do is the very significant decrease we have had in incidents of personal and property damage and neighborhood conflict since you put the restrictions in in '08. We were having a very serious problem, and it has greatly reduced. And, and so the belief is that the limitations on sale worked, but people are getting sufficiently affluent, that they're spending the money for the cakes and using them in a way that they are not able to use the single mortars because they're not easily available for sale.
Seems just like, you know, you'd be carrying around this thing, those boxes are like that big, you know, it wouldn't be that hard to find somebody who's going, who's holding a big box that's 16 inches.
Well, if you have, well, super big boxes, maybe, but if you have a cake that's, you know, the way things are written now, you could have a two-tube or three-tube cake and you could have one great big one, and we wouldn't be able to prohibit it. So what we're trying to do is to say, you know, if we, if we say it's unlawful to have one that's an inch and a half, how can it be logically lawful to have five with one that's an inch and a half? That, that's the, the problem we're trying to address.
All this talk about birthdays and cakes is making me hungry, but the, you know, I'm assuming a Roman candle would still be legal, the multiple-shot little single tools. I kind of agree with Rick in the sense that whether it's a baseball bat or a tire tool or a firework, if you use it aggressively towards somebody, the punishment should be for the assault, not for the tool or the weapon that you used. So I agree with him 1,000% on that. Where we differ is the fact that what you shoot in your yard doesn't come down in your yard. And I, because of the density of our city now and the increasing density of our city, I think it's time that we be considering doing away with fireworks and city limits altogether. But the, I know the city puts on a fantastic fire show that's available to the public and I wish everybody would come and enjoy it. If they wanted to shoot fireworks, they'd shoot them in the country where it goes up on the farm and comes down on the farm rather than landing in on your next-door neighbor's roof. And, but it, I understand what you're trying to do, but I kind of agree with Rick that, you know, we're, we're kind of going after the tool here versus going after the, the person who's misusing it. And if you do it for fireworks, I guess you'd do it for guns, too. And I don't want to start a trend of saying just because something has a bad result at the end that that's something that we need to make illegal, so.
Yeah, well, I'm sure our police officers, if they can apprehend somebody and make a criminal charge, they will. This is trying to, you know, nip it in the bud, if you will, at, at the front end. And I think, Mr. Smotherman, you were just on the council, when we had to, we had that incredible drought and things were so dry and we, you know, were concerned about the fire risk. So your point about the density and the hazard that they, this enjoyable, you know, fun thing can cause is certainly a recurring issue.
That special meeting was called by me and it was because you couldn't light a barbecue grill outside, but we were shooting fireworks outside with 12-year-old children. And to me, that didn't make sense. And so, so when there's a burn ban on, I'm not sure that I would ever support shooting fireworks anywhere within our city. And I think we addressed that when, when that situation arose and, but I don't know, I'm kind of with Rick on this one as far as, you know, I don't know where you draw the line and what the difference between a one-inch mortar and an inch-and-a-half mortar is. I mean, it just sounds like we're kind of trying to take a stab in the dark at some fireworks that are out there and, you know, I don't really get the significance of the inch-and-a-half mortar shell.
Well, the single, the inch-and-a-half we've had in place for single mortars for six, no, since, since '08, and it's worked. So that, you know, they're able to get great displays for sale for mortars for use by our residents that comply with our existing prohibition against the inch-and-a-half mortar. So, so that was doable and has, has worked for the problem that we were having.
I certainly see the, the issue with the capability of, if we would outlaw one, why wouldn't we outlaw, outlaw five, you know? Seems though there might be some other answer to me. I, I'll probably need to go a different direction, you know, probably not support this at this point, but only because I feel like I need to maybe think on it a little bit more, but I'm just, I don't, just kind of how I feel on it.
Is there some additional information that, you know, perhaps we can get back to? Obviously, you know, Chief Christman is here. If you wanted to get a perspective from him, we can share that, or if you'd like us to spend a little bit more time on it and come meet with you individually and see where we're at.
I think it may be a good idea that if, if you could give us, I don't know if, if we could get some exam, I'm not asking you to go out and buy fireworks, but if we could get some examples of what a cake looks like, you know, what a, this is what the mortar is that we've outlawed, this is what the cake looks like, you know, in comparison. I think that may.
We'll be glad to do that.
We're going down the right road here. I'm going to move for a deferral on that item.
Yeah. Second. And a motion and a deferral. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move into new business and we'll consider recommendations of the principal planner about scheduling public hearings to consider. Ms. Lewis?
Mayor McFarland and council members, I'm here to help schedule some public hearings. During its regular meeting on August 5, 2015, the planning commission conducted public hearings on the matters listed below. After the public hearings, the planning commission discussed the matters and then took action to recommend all of the approved, recommend approval of all three requests. Number one was the annexation petition for approximately 4.33 acres along Veterans Parkway. Lloyd and Edna Davis and Alex and Betty Bryan were the applicants. Another one was rezoning application for approximately 1.4 acres along Veterans Parkway to be zoned, commercial highway simultaneously with annexation, and 9.65 acres to be zoned from RM 16 to CH. Alex and Betty, Betty Bryan were, and the Wright family partnership were the applicants for that one. And last was the rezoning application for approximately two acres along, or located at 4536 Veterans Parkway to be zoned simultaneously CH with annexation. Lloyd and Edna Davis were the applicants.
I would suggest October 8.
That is fall break.
Okay, well, then I would suggest October 15.
That is not fall break.
It's October 15.
Yeah.
It's my birthday.
Yeah, that's right. It's your birthday, you can do whatever you want to.
Fireworks.
He's been eating too much cake.
We're outlawing.
It's alright with everybody.
Does October 15 work for everyone?
Move for set of public hearing October the 15.
Okay. Second. Have a motion and a second.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Ms. Christman may want to make note that October the 8 is fall break, a Thursday night, for those of us that have fall break. All right, we now have a right-of-way abandonment request for a portion of Florence Road.
Yes, sir. The subject property is located on the west side of Florence Road. If we could pull a map board for them to look at, it's on the west side of Florence Road, south of Grassland Drive and north of Honeybee Drive. Around 2008, 2009, Florence Road was reconstructed as a three-lane cross-section with sidewalks. As part of this road improvement project, this segment of Florence Road just south of Grassland Drive was realigned to eliminate a sharp curve. As a result of this realignment, a portion of excess right-of-way remains to the west of the new roadbed. In 2006, the Cedar Retreat, which is zoned PRD, was approved by the city council. The developer of the Cedar Retreat project has requested the city to abandon the excess right-of-way in front of his proposed development so that it can be transferred to him and incorporated into the development. His PRD handbook shows this excess right-of-way to be, will be subdivision common area to be used as a passive park. The development, the developer's engineer has submitted an exhibit showing the exact dimensions of what has been requested to be abandoned in front of the Cedar Retreat property. In addition, the neighboring property owner to the north has joined in the request and would like this small excess, small amount of excess right-of-way in front of his property abandoned as well. The right-of-way in front of his property is labeled on the map exhibit as additional study area. Included in your agenda materials is a right-of-way abandonment study completed by the planning staff. Matthew really wanted me to make sure that if this is approved, that these four recommendations are accompanying this approval. It is, he was, he's, number one was utility, utility and drainage easements as needed must be retained prior to the abandonment of the right-of-way was number one. Number two is the applicants must provide a legal description and exhibit and any other documentation necessary for the preparation of the required legal documents. Number three was all legal documents are subject to the approval of the city attorney. And number four is the applicants will be responsible for recording a quitclaim deed. No public hearing is necessary for this. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions about this right-of-way abandonment? I'll move for passage.
Subject to those conditions.
Subject to those.
Subject to those conditions. Have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. We'll consider a request of the Human Resources Director and Information Technology Director for additional funding for Cronos Workforce Central software implementation and training.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and Murfreesboro City Council. IT Director Chris Lilly and I will be co-presenting agenda items this evening that deals with the Cronos and Tyler Munis software implementation, which is a multi-departmental project nearing its completion. Our request this evening deals with two parts. The first is a request for additional funding of facilitator-led training by Cronos to be conducted with the city's approximately 240 supervisors and managers. Our original contract with Cronos provides for department head training and train, the trainer facilitation. However, it is apparent, given the complexity of the project, that our project leader, Assistant HR Director Pam Russell, and our subject matter expert, Ms. Cheryl Sharp, have become increasingly involved in program configuration in order to meet the key project deliverables and the go-live date. This would ensure that our 1,400 city employees' pay and benefits accruals are properly transitioned to the new software in time for the November go-live and project launch date. This funding would also allow for Ms. Russell and Sharp to focus again on this configuration. At this stage, as to provide critical vendor-led frontline training to our supervisors without our employees having to facilitate the same training while managing these other key components of the implementation to its completion. I'll ask Mr. Lilly to speak to the second portion of our presentation, and he and I will both be able to answer questions following that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We currently are implementing a version of Cronos Workforce Central, which is called workforce, which is called version seven. Since our, our approach at determining and deciding upon a solution to use for Workforce Central for our HRIS system and for timekeeping, a lot of technology has changed for the better. The version that we had decided upon is the version that is a common version of timekeeping, which uses third-party apps to help servers to communicate with endpoints or our time clocks or computers, whichever way we, we clock in and manage, manage time and, and manage attendance. The current version uses what we call Java, JavaScript, which is an app that works with our browser and with, with the servers and with our endpoints that help us maintain a certain level of security. Since the time that we've made this decision to the time that we are looking at implementing this, this fall, technology has changed and there are, there are other ways of more securely coming about this solution and, and Cronos has, has rolled out, which is a major release, Workforce Central version eight. In version eight, it does not, it's not dependent on JavaScript, which can be an issue support-wise because Java, JavaScript has to be a certain version on the servers, on the browser, and if, if those don't match, then you're calling IT. So we're, we're looking at a, an improvement in, you know, what they're using in version eight. in, you know, what they're using in version eight. Version eight removes the reliability of third-party apps, which will help us to focus on business goals without being limited by our systems. The new version also has a built-in system health and performance monitoring, which provides IT with relative visibility. This, this will give us the ability to be proactive in resolving issues so that we can resolve, resolve them before they even occur or that we see them out in the field. So with that being said, we, HR as well as IT, we recommend the purchase of version eight software of the Cronos Workforce Central.
I'll open for any questions.
How much do it cost?
What is the total cost of both the implementation and the software upgrade?
The total cost is approximately $56,000.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Is this, is the Cronos software, is that going to be a regular upgrade? Or does this version eight, is there gonna be a version nine?
Probably.
Version 10?
I'm sure there will. As far as the minor updates, those are usually security-driven or if there's some type of just tweak or change they need to make, we're able to communicate back up, possible enhancements. And, and those, we can, you know, we don't, we're not up in front of you asking for more money to get. But these major releases, this is a whole new version, and it's, it's, it's using, it's using totally different dependencies on soft, on other software. So this one, yes, we'd have to, we purchased this one. But as far as the minor releases, that would happen automatically.
So it might be an additional software expense, but the additional expense of personnel or those, that you're, the project manager and the consultant and all those, those expenses may not necessarily be needed when we do an upgrade?
What, what we're seeing in, in justifying from the IT side of the house is that the total cost of ownership on our end is lower because, yes, we, we're not gonna...
Consultants.
We, we need, when we're looking at support, instead of being reactive, we can be proactive. We can catch the, you know, the slowness issues that we're seeing, you know, with, with connecting. We can see that earlier. We can monitor. We can, we can set it to where we get notification when we do have an endpoint or a time clock down so we can get that fixed before we have a 2:30 AM shift come in and they can't use a time clock. So we're seeing it as a, as a return on investment.
And this doesn't affect the November go-live date?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
All good questions.
If there's no other questions, I'll move with approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Item eight, we'll consider recommendations of the Chief of Police with the Fourth Amendment to the Contract with American Traffic Solutions Incorporated.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Pleasure to be with you tonight. I have placed a corrected version of a document on your work table tonight. The copy that was included in your material said some calculation errors in it, and those have been corrected. I apologize for those errors, and we'll be glad to answer questions about those in a moment, if you have some. As an item for your regular agenda tonight, we are requesting your approval for the city's entry into the amendment to the Contract with American Traffic Solutions for the Automated Red Light Camera Enforcement System. And as you see from your materials, this contract was initiated initially on March the 11th, 2011, and that contract was to extend no longer than through a five-year period. That five-year period will end in March of 2016. The current contract that we're under is up for renewal effective in November, and if we choose to extend it, we have to notify American Traffic Solutions by September the 1st. So we are asking, the original contract was for a three-year period with extensions of one year each to go through November the 15th, or November of 2015. But the five-year period, which is the full extension of the contract time, does go through March. So that's what we're asking you to do, is to extend this contract for the remainder of that five-year period through March the 10th. And I think you have those documents that are provided for you. In the material that I presented for your review that gives you a little bit of an update on the data, the crash data from last year, I think there are a couple of things that are notable, and I did highlight those in the revised version that you have. You will see some increases in the individual crash numbers from 2014-15 data to 2000, or 2013-14 data to 15, to 14-15 data. I'll get that right in a minute. And those are noted, and you can see what those percentage increases are. I would call to your attention one thing that is not noted in the graphs or the charts that you have. When we began this system in 2007/8, we had 122 signalized intersections. We currently have 149. So any crashes that happened at any of those 149 signalized intersections are going into the data tables that you see. And we didn't try to spin that or re-explain that in any other way other than just say, here's what the totals are for this year's crash numbers at those intersections, all signalized intersections, as well as the six where the red light cameras are. So you will see some, some increases from the 13-14 data in those specific areas. I think it's important to call to your attention that if you look at where we were in terms of crashes in 2007/8 when we started this program, and look at where we are in 2014-15, you'll still see some significant decreases in the number of crashes. For instance, total crashes at all signalized intersections in 2007/8, we had 1,692. That was 122 intersections. For the past year, with 149 intersections, even though we had a substantial increase, we're still only at 1,064. That's 628 crashes less, or about 37% less. If you look at, let's see, rear-end crashes, we had 1,077 in 2007/8, the most recent year, which showed a significant increase in the number of those crashes from, from the year prior. But still, 677. That is 400 less than in 2007/8. If you look at side-angle crashes, and if you remember, those were the crashes that we focused on the most because those had the greatest potential for personal injury or fatalities at signalized intersection. In 2007/8, we had 615. In 2014-15, we had 387, which is a significant number, about 37% less than we had to begin with. And you see the same kinds of, of comparisons if you look at the crash data at the intersections with automated enforcement, with one exception. If you look at the rear-end crashes at the intersections with signalized or with automated enforcement controls, you will see that we actually went up last year by three crashes over what that data showed for 2007/8. But those other numbers are significantly down. Side-angle crashes at the, at the locations where we have red light cameras went down from 71 in 2007/8 to 28 last year. It's over a 60% decrease in that one category. So with that said, we do, the data does indicate increases in crashes for the 2014-15 year from the year prior. And I can't explain that other than to say we've added 27 more intersections, added 10 more since last year when we had this conversation. And I will tell you that when we went, we went back and looked at the crash data for our city, remember, this is just intersection-related crashes. When we went back and looked at intersection, or crashes for the entire city, there's about a 6% increases in, in crashes citywide. And in every month except two, we charted or reported more crashes than we did a year ago. So the crash rates are up. That probably contributed a little bit to the increases that you see in the intersection crash data from this year to last. And I would suggest to you that the increase in the intersections skewed that data a little bit as well. Make no mistake about it, gentlemen, the system is still working. You're having less crashes at signalized intersections in Murfreesboro, Tennessee than we were seven years ago. And we can all discuss, I guess, what the causes for that are, but this is one tool that your police department uses to make our intersections and our roadways safer in addition to our DUI teams, our motorcycle enforcement teams, our selective traffic enforcement operations that are funded by Governor's Highway Safety Office money. We've added, obviously, aggressive driving units that are focusing more and more of their time on distracted driving. So this is a multifaceted traffic enforcement, traffic safety approach, of which the red light cameras is one component. So we would respectfully ask for you to extend the contract through March of next year. And at that time, I think, or prior to that time, I think there's another discussion to be had about the rebidding of the system, the reconfiguration of the system, the sharing of the monies that are derived from the system. One other thing that I would say to you is, while we've added intersections, our traffic's increased, the traffic density has increased. We have not added any red light cameras since 2007/8. We had six intersections with 22 cameras then. We still have six intersections with 22 cameras. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
This would extend the contract for seven months? Is that what I'm...
November...
Well, it actually starts, I think, Mr. Shacklet.
September or...
November and goes through March the 10th. Ms. McGannon, is that correct?
Four months.
And it will have to...
Through the end of March or...
Through March the 10th.
Okay.
Based on the existing contract language that's in place now. Chief, I know you contend this is one tool that we use, and I agree with you. And I can't give you enough accolades for how much I appreciate our police department, how much I'm concerned about the safety of our police officers. I've probably taken a beating more in the last month over trying to get a safety sightline than any person in Murfreesboro. And I probably deserve it, but it, but, but it's about safety.
It is.
And this is, this is one of those that I just have to evaluate and look at and say, is it really working? And is it still working if it did work? Can you tell me the number of tickets that were issued last year because...
I think I do have that, if you'll give me just a moment. Well, I don't have that right here, Mr. Smotherman. Well, I do too. 19,288 citations issued. That would be for the 2014 year.
Can you tell me how many of those tickets were paid?
I understand that of those, let me give you the other side of that. From city court data, there were 3,898 that were not paid. Now, the 19, the ones that were paid for that period of time, and I'm sure it wasn't just those tickets, it was others that were paid throughout the year, and this is in the materials that you have, generated 943,726.93 in revenue. And the, the fees that we paid to ATS per the contract were 801,273.74.
Chief, do you think it's fair that we issue tickets that we don't have the ability to enforce? Because there's 3,898 people who didn't pay their tickets last year, and they're probably not gonna pay them. And we've got $2.5 million worth of outstanding tickets accumulated, from what I understand, throughout the program?
Well, I think Ms. McGannon has opined before, and we have said before, that there are some mechanisms in place that we can use to collect some of those outstanding debts, and we're continuing to do that. And I guess if the question, Mr. Smotherman, is about the fairness of that, I would suggest to you, sir, if we save one life at a right-angle collision, because there's been a behavior change and we don't have anybody killed at intersections because of that, then yes, sir, it's more than fair.
Is there any way that you can ever prove that a life was saved because there was a camera or a signalized intersection?
Well, I think the crash data is an indicator of that. If you, if we're 628 crashes less this year, or for the last year that we have data provided to you than we had seven years ago, to me, that says something has happened. There...
Something has happened.
People are being more attentive.
I agree with you. If we look at your chart right here.
Mm-hmm.
When gas prices were high and rising, the amount of people traveling on the road went down, and so did the number of accidents at our intersections. About a year and a half ago, gas prices started dropping dramatically. And what happened at our intersections when more people started traveling? I contend that this graph that you're showing relates to gas prices more than it does to safety.
I respect your opinion, sir, and respect your position and your reason to give it. I respectfully disagree, but, but as we've said before, we agree to disagree.
I agree. I agree with that. Okay. The cost of the local economy was roughly $1 million last year.
Mm-hmm.
We encourage people to shop local over and over and over again, to try and keep that money in our local economy so that it spends and it turns. Of that $1 million, you realize that only about $150,000 of it stayed local and stayed into our coffers where we could use that money to have safety programs, to train officers, to, to build a training facility. I know the money goes into the general fund. It's not just used for police. And it's basically used to offset the cost of an officer who sits in a little room and watches the videos and confirms that he agrees with the data that has come from Scottsdale, Arizona. But the vast majority of that money goes to Arizona, doesn't it?
To defray the, the cost of the system and the operation of the system, the services that they're providing to us that we don't provide.
So do we agree or disagree that it has a pretty significant effect on our local economy to take money out of our economy and send it to another state with no return?
I think we disagree, Mr. Smotherman, because the numbers are what they are. But I get back to the overall safety factor of a reduction in crashes at those intersections that could amount to far more money than that.
And again, I, I appreciate what you're doing. I, I think that in your heart, you believe it's about safety. In my heart, I think red means stop, the green means money. And I think that's what it comes down to here, is, is it worth us sending this much money out of our local economy to Scottsdale, Arizona with no return, other than saying some traffic data that seems to be going in the wrong direction right now? And when the, the numbers drop, we always say it's because of the cameras. But when the numbers go up, we say it's an anomaly. That's not fair.
With all due respect, Mr. Smotherman, I've delivered fatal accident crash team messages or been involved with the delivery of those messages. It's not about money, sir. It's about safety. It's about saving lives, just like writing speeding tickets is, just like making DUI arrests is.
I agree.
Just like finding a distracted driver is. It's one tool and an overall strategy that helps make our streets safer.
It is one tool, but, but we never answer the question why. Why did the person run the red light? Were they just in a rush? Were they late for school? Were they under the influence? Were they, and I'll, were you late for work? I mean, at the, I know some of the people sitting up here probably had tickets for running red lights. Fortunately, I haven't. And there's one reason that I haven't had one. One simple reason. I stop at red lights.
Thank you, sir.
And I think, I think everybody should. So I encourage people to do that. But at the same time, I see no association whatsoever between the cameras themselves because they do not stop a car from entering the intersection. They do not prevent, they do not do anything other than record the events that take place at that intersection. And if they were a true deterrent, then the numbers would certainly support that the camera at intersections should have not seen a greater increase of accidents than the non-automated intersections. have not seen a greater increase of accidents than the non-automated intersections. If they were doing their job, and they were working and doing as presented, we wouldn't have seen that. So.
If I was in the receiving end of that crash from someone who had run through a red light and hit me broadside, Mr. Smotherman, I wouldn't really care why he ran the red light. I would just care that I was victim of that crash and hope that somebody was paying more attention to what that light said, like you are.
Yeah. But if I'm finding, I can ask the guy, why did you run that light?
[laughing]
I mean, and we'll have a conversation about why, why he should have stopped.
I hope you share that with the police, where they get there.
But, but thank you for what you do. We've got a fantastic police department. I know I kind of beat up on you every year at this time. And it's not because we don't like each other. It's just because we simply don't agree on this one subject.
I appreciate your opinion and respect it, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Chrisman, I've just got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
And this is, you know, we, we all have sat up and had these conversations throughout the years. And so Councilmember Smotherman, we know, I know where Councilmember Smotherman disagrees, and, and I know he knows where I stand. But I had this discussion with one of our local legislators. I just want to go through a couple of things I wrote down.
Please.
If it were about money, we have 4% of our total intersections that have cameras, six out of 149. If it were about money and it were a windfall, would we be up here advocating to have more signalized intersections that would have cameras? That's my one, not really question, it's a comment. And then I hear, this is the conversation I had with one of our local legislators, and this is legislators, and this is coming from a contractor. Deputy Chief Tims, where did our last fire truck come from?
[inaudible]
I believe it was Wisconsin, wasn't it?
Yeah.
We have money from our local government that goes out of state, if not weekly, daily. And as a local, I told our local legislator, this is coming from a local contractor, if you will give us the ability to only deal with Rutherford County people, I would gladly jump up and down and say all of our money can stay in local people, or stay in the local economy. But they don't give us that opportunity. We have to go by the low bid, or we have to go by request for proposals with people who provide those services. And as far as the traffic light cameras, no one in Tennessee provides that service. So when I say, when people say that money's going out of the local economy, there's construction companies who are building projects in this community that are not in Rutherford County. So money goes out of our local economy daily. And this is where I went. These decisions, I think, have to be made at local levels. Local decisions should be made at local levels.
Amen.
And some of it, agree to disagree. But this is the last question I want to ask you. The people who run the red lights that get a ticket, and you look at those videos, did they break the law?
Yes, sir.
So they broke the law?
Yes, sir.
So my response to the same guy that calls me on WGNS every time I'm there, don't run the red light. And the last thing I would say as a dad, I can't speak for other councilmembers who are dads, but if I have a six, if my boys are 16 years old and they're driving the red lights, and they run, and we have the red light camera five years from now when they're driving, please send me the ticket to let me know that they're running that red light. Because the red light that you send me that ticket that I can show my kid that they're running the red light, that may save their life.
You don't need to go to the [inaudible].
So, yeah. But that's the only thing I want, I want to say. So obviously, you know where I'm going to vote on this.
Mr. Mayor, I might add, we haven't talked about this, but there was a robust debate in the General Assembly in this last session about the use of automated enforcement. And at the end of the session, and I testified before the House Transportation Committee, Traffic Committee, and was there at Senate Transportation on a number of occasions, at the end of the day, they made two changes, or really one. They put some controls on the use of speed cameras in the state of Tennessee.
Ooh, damn.
And they looked at the use of cameras to protect the safety of school zones, and they allowed that to stay. They took no action with red light cameras. Because not just from Murfreesboro, but from Knoxville, from Chattanooga, from Memphis, from many other cities in Tennessee that sell, that tell the same kind of story that we do every year about what the data shows, and, and the ability to use the technology to free up police officers to do other things. Other things that are more critically important to the safety of our community in some ways even than, than the intersections are, if you can imagine that. But, you know, the most precious resource that you allow me to have every year is police officers. And I think you, you have an expectation that we're going to use those police officers as efficiently and as effectively as possible. It's not stationing them at intersections to write red light camera tickets when we've got technology that is much more efficient and much more effective at doing that task. So the General Assembly saw that the same way, and the legislation stays as is. Now, do I expect that, that come January, there'll be another round of debate about that? Absolutely. But there are a whole lot of things that your law enforcement officers in Murfreesboro across Tennessee are tasked with doing every day. And I desperately need them focused on those tasks if we've got a technological way to address this issue.
Mr. LaLance?
Yes, sir. A couple of comments I want to make is, number one, is it just, as you said that about the General Assembly coming up and knowing that they might not be done until April, maybe even May, you know, that's going to create potentially an issue for us come next spring between the March 10th date and then whatever they get through talk. I mean, if they're discussing something, we may need to have some sort of a plan in place, assuming this passes tonight. If it does, then we'll have this little gap that we'll need to cover. I mean, we need to, you know, we need to kind of address that if we, I don't know what will happen, but somewhere in the planning, we need to address it, okay?
Mr. LaLance, we've done that with this contract before because the General Assembly's looked at it. We put a provision in the contract as well as the specifications indicating that there's an obligation on the contractor to comply with whatever the law might be.
I mean, the other way around.
You know, that, that won't be, that won't be an issue.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking the other way around. If there's some, if there's some robust discussion going on February the 20th, that we may not want to go through this exercise on February 28th to decide whether or not what we're doing on March 10th, and then they go in and scrap it or change it, and we have to then go change the whole entire thing. We just probably need to have some kind of thought process behind it, is what I'm saying. Secondly, I mean, I, I feel like I need to make a comment about the, you know, the idea, and Eddie, I, and I can hear what you're saying on this. One of the things that I would say, the only thing that I really hear as it relates to the cameras that I really kind of makes me feel a little funny about it is the idea that we would say, you know, is there any proof that a camera has ever stopped anybody from going through a, a red light? And, and the obvious answer is no. But I don't really think that's what this is all about. I mean, I think it's a change of behavior. I mean, it's like saying, has a speed gun ever actually slowed a car down? And the answer is no. I mean, a speed gun has never, ever actually slowed a car down. But I guarantee you, it's made me hit the brakes.
But, but the, the theory of this, intersections are safer because cameras are there, there's 19,288 reasons that I can say they're not working.
Look, I, I'm, I'll give you that, that's legitimate. But the, what I don't think is, is to, is to contend that we should be able to say, does it physically stop a car? No, it doesn't. I mean, everybody knows that the answer is no to that. It's just the fact, does it change behavior? You might think it doesn't change behavior. He thinks it does. And based on it going from 1,600 to 1,000 over the last eight years, with 22% more stoplights, and probably 22% more people driving our roads, whether gas prices are high or low, or either way, probably sounds like there's less crashes to me with more traffic, which means it probably, it sounds safer to me. I mean, that's, that's how I'm coming to my conclusion, at least. That's, you know, where I stand on it.
Hearing for motion. Mayor, move we approve the renewal of the contract.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Now, moving on to more exciting stuff, we have a letter from the Assistant City Manager regarding Resolution 15R33 about adoption of, of changing the City Hall Art Committee.
We've got to have some excitement, don't we?
Ms. Moody, is this your first presentation?
This is, and you have asked me to follow the police chief. So I feel a little intimidated there. But good evening. I've actually enjoyed looking into this request. City Manager and I met with the Chairman of the City Hall Art Committee and heard a request to rename the committee to the Murfreesboro Art Committee. I did a little bit of research into the history of, of when they were established and what their purpose and intent behind it was. And back in the early 90s, they were established when this building was built, and they were asked to oversee art in the rotunda. Over the years, their duties and responsibilities have been expanded. They frequently work with the city school system and do a lot of competitions with students. They also have worked with our city parks. And I think in the future, there's reasons to believe that they will develop relationships with other city facilities outside of City Hall. So for that reason, it makes a lot of sense to really recognize their expanded role and rename it just the City Art Committee, take, take the hall out of it.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Resolution 15R33, Ms. Moody, that's the first one that you've ever presented in that it passed. So make sure and write that now.
There'll be many more.
That's right. Letter for, letter from the City Attorney regarding hearing officer for the Beer Board and Resolution 15R34.
Mayor and Council, you recall that Ordinance 15026 amended your city code relative to beer and created the position of hearing officer for the City Beer Board, which the City Council functions as a city beer board. Under the ordinance as adopted, it was my responsibility as City Attorney to recommend up to three individuals to serve as hearing officers for you, should you have need, functioning as the beer board. I reached out to the three attorneys who serve as hearing officers for the disciplinary review board, knowing that they had experienced a license, were in good standing, et cetera. I'm pleased to report that all three of them indicated a willingness to serve as hearing officers for the beer board as well. And so my recommend, my first recommendation is that you approve John Blankenship, Jim Duncan, and Lisa Ishad as hearing officers for the city for a one-year term that would end on June 30th of next year, or until their successors are approved. And I would request a motion to that effect, and then I will speak about the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 15R34 purports to set the compensation for hearing officers. And this would be, in whatever capacity the city uses hearing officers, it has heretofore been for the disciplinary review board. And that amount had been set a number of years ago, based on the amount that the city judge was getting at an hourly basis that's been upgraded and, and was currently at $219.87. And the recommendation to you in Resolution 15R34 is, is that you even that number out and set the hourly rate of pay at $220 an hour. You may have noticed that we are making an effort to try and bring you annual fee changes through resolutions, you know, so that the fees don't get in ordinances. And, and this is one such resolution. And so that is the recommendation to you. Each of those lawyers is worth more, but they've agreed to take this.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll consider for adoption Resolution 15R35, amending Resolution 15R06 to amend figures to coincide with correct wording.
This is something I haven't brought to you before. I'm embarrassed to have to do it, but I like to clean up my own messes. We had a resolution where in words, we said $300,000. In figures, we said $300 million. Even though words control over figures, we didn't want there to be any doubt about how much money you intended to spend on renovating Hobgood Elementary School. So the purpose of this resolution is to correct that and make the words and figures match.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Wright?
Call the roll to fix Ms. McGannon's mistake.
Mr. LaLance?
I'm scared to vote. Go on the record, Ed.
Aye.
You were televised, yes.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Well, we need to record that, because that doesn't happen.
Very, very, very seldom.
That's ever happened.
I can say we've never had a $270 million change order.
We only have a little over 60 days to get Ms. McGannon as much as we can between now and November, so I'm going to make good use of that time. Okay. We'll now hear recommendations of the City Attorney with revisions to the employee handbook. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor and Council, what I have before you tonight represents the combined thinking of the legal HR department with support of the administration to make a number of changes to the employee handbook, some of them to be effective immediately, and some of them to be effective with the new software, which was discussed with you at an earlier agenda item. What I would like to do is to discuss them one by one, pausing for questions with each of them, even though they are somewhat interdependent, and, and I'll relate to the software. But because they are important topics for your employees, and I want to make sure that what staff is recommending is clear to you, I'd like to look at them individually. And it can be the council's call, whether you want one vote or, you know, separate votes. The first is a revision of Section 1008 dealing with holiday pay. You already, you have a current holiday pay provision. We'd come to you and had a change to be effective for the new software for October 1. One of the changes is making that November 1, because that now appears to be the software date. The other is to explicitly recognize that for shift employees in the Fire and Rescue Department, that their accrual rate for holiday is 12 hours rather than 10.8. That was implied in the last version we're making explicit now. The other is to allow a practice which had developed as regard exempt shift commanders who had been receiving holiday pay to continue to do so. Because that is an exception and is not otherwise applicable to exempt employees, it's precisely limited to the three individuals who are currently receiving that benefit. So those are the changes that we propose to make for this policy, which would take effect on November 1st or when the new software kicks in. Are there any questions about the proposed revision to Section 1008?
Do we need to take these individually?
That can be your call. That would be my suggestion, but it's up to you.
Do we have a motion on 1008 holiday pay?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you. The next is proposed as Number 5009, classification and reclassification. This is trying to implement the MAGG classification system that you have previously adopted. And it's setting out when a new job is being created, how it will be classified into a pay grade, and if we have an existing employee whose job duties substantially change and a reclassification seems appropriate, how a reclassification would be requested, who has authority to make that request, what the role of human resources is in both a new position and a reclassification, and setting the maximum amount of pay if there And it is with 5% for the first pay grade, 2.5% for each additional pay grade, with a maximum of 10%. So that is the proposed new policy on classification and reclassification that would be Number 5009, that would take effect immediately. Are there any questions about 5009?
There are no questions. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you. The next policy is on compensation. This is a reworking of our existing section of 5003 very extensively. It reflects the policy that the city council adopted when it adopted the MAGG study about pay upon promotions. So it reflects that same provision, which has a maximum of 15%, and eliminated the requirement that was in place, that if you received a promotional increase, you were not eligible for any across-the-board or step increases. You know, that's consistent. Those aren't a part of it. But it goes into, if you will, new territory from what you have previously done, implementing the MAGG study by setting out what the pay would be for a person hired into a new position. And it makes clear that the salary for someone, you know, newly hired is going to be the minimum of the pay grade unless the new employee meets one of four criteria. And those four criteria are that the person has more job experience than is required, if experience is required for a particular job, that the employee is being hired for a hard-to-fill position, that the employee is being hired to fill an exempt professional or technical position, or a person is being hired as a department head or assistant department head. And it sets out an example for how the experience credit would work, and what the range would be for the other three situations, and what the role of the department head and human resources and the city manager are in all three of those situations, setting a max for what the amount can be. And the idea is that in setting these figures, there are certain provisions that, certain concepts that need to be maintained. For example, the experience credit is possible but not a guarantee because of the city's commitment to make sure it does not have inverted salary relationships, where new hires are getting more money than existing employees who've been there for some period of time. So there is some flexibility in how the hard-to-fill or the experience credit would be applied to adjust above the minimum. But there is a cap in the sense that there are limitations on when an amount can be above the market for the pay grade. It also goes, in addition to the new hire, it goes through how salaries are reconsidered upon promotion, upon demotion, upon transfers, and it repeats the existing provision about salary supplements and when they apply and what they're used for, and has an important policy statement about employees who are topped out, that when an employee is topped out and is receiving pay at or above the maximum for the pay grade based on the city adopted classification system, they are not eligible for other pay unless and until, other than a salary supplement, unless and until there is a shift in the range, which may well occur, but they're topped out would stay topped out. So as you can see from that rushed but still lengthy summary, this is an important section dealing with important policy statements, giving both guidance to your HR director and the city manager, as well as giving them certain amounts of flexibility. But it's to ensure that the fairness and consistent application of the MAGG system that we spent a lot of time creating will be maintained as we work through with various employment changes that occur with new and existing employees.
I had questions. I was reading through this, Rob. I think this may be for you. I went back and tried to reference my notes, and I saw something to this effect, but we have in here up to a maximum of 15% on the raises. Somewhere in my notes during the MAGG discussion, I had written down that there was, we were just getting away from the max altogether. I don't know if that was, it was a million parts to it, but I guess what intrigued me to think through it a little bit and kind of wonder why we would have a maximum. You know, if we've got the, if we have the classifications set up correctly, like we think we do, then if someone gets a promotion that has six steps difference, then they should get paid for six steps. And, you know, six levels, not steps, sorry, six classification numbers, yeah. Then why would we stop at a 15? Because it seems like that would create more of this overlap and all that if we start putting in manual limitations.
It would still go to the minimum of that new position. If someone, you know, had a pay grade movement of six pay grades, they've still, the 15% doesn't apply, they would go to the minimum of that new position. You know, I know Susan gave you a lengthy explanation about it, and there is a lot of meat here. You know, I will say, kind of in a quick summary, we think this policy is going to give us far more guidance than we've ever had before. It'll allow us to attract talent, the best talent we possibly can, and really, I think, set us up to make sure we're managing the internal equity piece as well. So, know there's a lot here, but more guidance than we've ever had before with this policy.
That make sense, Mr. LaLance?
I think, I guess I'm struggling with it a little bit still, just trying to think through some of the math. I mean, if there's, if the minimum is above 15% for the new position, they will get more than 15%?
Yes, they would go to the minimum of the new pay grade. They would, the idea is, nobody would ever get less than the minimum of the pay grade to which they are assigned. That's sort of a fundamental principle throughout.
If they get, okay, but if someone gets a promotion that would take them, let's say it's, for easy math, it's three steps, which would be 10%, okay? And that eclipses the minimum for that next position, they're still going to eclipse the minimum?
Yes. They still get the 10%.
Yep. That's when you say going to minimum, I thought you meant backwards way. Got it.
In the section that says salary when topped out, that hasn't changed. I mean, that's basically just restating what?
The council has said people are topped out, but then the council has made, given the money. And so we hadn't clearly said as a matter of employee handbook policy, we'd had the step system, and somebody functionally would be topped out, and so the city manager coming to you with the budget would never have a proposed increase for the people who are topped out. So functionally, it was topped out and no ability on the city manager's part to come to you with more, but we didn't have an adopted council policy. This makes an adopted council policy, so it will be, it's trying to manage employee expectations, you know, that topped out means topped out until the range changes. Now, one of the other things that, you know, MAGG has suggested, that the city manager, you know, will be getting information from the HR director, is should the range change half a percent or 2% this year, because data indicates that salaries for government jobs have gone up so much. And so the possibility for range adjustment, or somebody, you know, gets a promotion, or at some point in the future, the council may do a merit pay, you know, that'll be within the range or in addition to the range, and that would be another possibility. But for now, it's stating the council's intent that a maximum for the pay grade is the maximum unless and until there's an adjustment to the range, or market data for that particular job shows that that particular job, you know, needs to be more with an adjustment.
Salary supplements haven't been defined as detailed as the normally, as we have in this particular.
This, the language in the salary supplements is pretty much what we've got now. I didn't make very many changes to that. We started giving salary supplements without a lot of detail, but the last time we looked at this section of the employee handbook, we pretty much spelled that out. Yeah. We aren't changing that. You know, those are not promotions, but, you know, they're paid because somebody's got, doing an additional task, and, you know, it's on top of whatever the salary is based on your pay grade.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion, second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move to interim pay.
Thank you. This is a rewrite of what we currently are calling of out-of-class pay. Interim pay was a MAGG suggested term that we adopted. We've amended this provision somewhat to make clear that a position needs to be vacant as defined in the policy before it can be awarded, that a department head is the one who says whether or not it's appropriate. It changes in C2, it changes how the pay is to be determined by making it a reflection of the pay grade of the job that the employee is doing, rather than, as we have under our current system, a percentage above what the current job performed by the employee is, as it is now, they've got 10% on top of their current salary. This shifts the focus to the job that they are doing. It also makes clear that even if they're assigned to be doing an exempt job, that doesn't turn them, if they're a non-exempt employee, for FLSA purpose, and it sets up that there needs to be a clear starting and stopping point to it, and that this would not exceed six months without the city manager's approval.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you. Section 1010, types and methods of compensation, is a new section which we propose to take effect November 1. One of the things that staff hopes will be an advantage for this new software for employees as to timekeeping is that they'll be more aware of and more focused on the kinds of compensation that they do get from the city and be looking at their time and pay records. And so we're trying to facilitate that, as well as to clear up some questions which may arise as to, well, am I paid for this? You know, does this count for my overtime rate? Does this count for pension? And so the purpose of this policy is to spell that out. The chart that's on page 3 of the policy, when I did the draft, I lacked the numbers for the proposed standby pay policy, which we're now suggesting would be 1043, and the call-in-to-duty pay, which would be 1023. One of the reasons we are suggesting that this take effect in November is because the changes to those two policies, which I'll be talking about in just a moment, we're suggesting not take effect until November. So it's not that the substance will really change in terms of how a Christmas gift payment is considered, it's that we need to have them be congruent with the other two policies, which we're recommending would be a little different in November. So that's what the goal of this policy is. Be happy to answer any questions about it or any of the items on the chart.
Move we approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you. 1023, the call-in-to-duty policy is the same number as it has currently, but we've stripped out from the current policy what we've called as on-call status and on-call pay, which I'll be talking about in a moment. This repeats the basic policy that any employee of the city can be called into duty if the city has a need at any time without, you know, any preconditions, but that an employee would not be disciplined if they could not report when called into duty, if they had a good reason or couldn't do it, and explained that they were not going to be able to come when they were first called in. It also spells out that they would be, receive extra pay for the time when they are called in, because this is when you're calling somebody in who's expected to be off, expected to be at home, and you're calling them in. So the suggestion is that we're cleaning up the language a current policy talks about at overtime rate. Well, it really isn't overtime work, because it may or may not be more than 40 hours a week. And there is a very technical meaning, as you saw from the chart, as to when certain things are included in your overtime rate of pay or your regular rate of pay, it's called. And so here, we're saying that there was a premium paid that is half your base salary, and that that would be applicable to all of the time that's call-in-to-duty time. Currently, there is a provision that says if you are called into duty for 1.3 hours or less, you get paid call-in-to-duty pay for two hours, and then after that, it's at regular time. This has, is, would be very hard to program Kronos with and is confusing in its application. And so we believe it will be simpler and fairer to remove the limit on the amount of time for which you can get this premium and to call it what it really is, which is a premium for being called in, rather than to call it overtime pay. And this is pay, a premium that is not applicable to people in the police and fire department and rescue departments who are shift tour-of-duty workers, because they have, you know, 21 and 28 days, you know, respectively, to work different hours. And so the expectation is that they may be called in especially as needs arise. So it is, it is not applicable to them, but it removes the cap for the other employees on how long they might be entitled to get it. So this has, we think, some definite advantages for record-keeping, but don't expect that it will be a significant swing financially for both, for either the employee or the city. Obviously, we'll need to get some time with it, you know, starting November, and after we have a year of experience, staff may come back to you and make some suggestions for tweaking, but this is what we believe is fair and appropriate at this time.
Any questions on the call-in duty? Call-in-to-duty?
Move we approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Now move to standby obligation and compensation.
Thank you. As I say, we broke this out of, to avoid confusion with call-in-to-duty, and tried to address the status of being on-call. You know, we put employees on-call when it's expected, there may be a need for some work after hours, and it's basically saying, who's going to be first up to get? to get the call if somebody has to be called into duty? If they are called into duty, they get paid the call into duty premium under the policy that you just approved. Standby is a status that basically says, you've got to be reachable by phone, and you can't be drunk. You know, there's certain minimum things that we say. But other than that, you're not working, and you can do what you want to do. So there is no pay that is automatic with being on standby. It also makes explicit, or, you know, it repeats and makes even more structured, I should say, the provision that if you're going to have a standby list, that list has, that policy has to be approved by HR legal and the department head so that we don't have any misuse of standby status. And we don't have such restrictions that it might be looked at as though somebody is working. It also provides that there can be, if there is recommended by the department head and approved by the other officials I just mentioned, the ability to pay people for being on standby status. But that is not automatic. And that the pay for being on standby status would be uniform. Everybody gets the same. It's not a reflection of how much you make in salary. And as I say again, it's not automatic. So that's basically what the proposed standby policy would do.
Who makes that decision whether the standbys are compensated?
The department head would recommend it. The HR director would look at it. The city attorney would look at it. The city manager would look at it. Because we don't want it to be just, oh, everybody's on standby, everybody gets pay. But if people are, you know, we think the likelihood they'll be called out on standby is high, or there may be a requirement that they, you know, pick up a specialized vehicle, or there are so few people on standby, it seems that it might be a little bit more burdensome than if you have a large department. You know, there are a variety of factors that go into it. But trying to make sure that there is consistency without wasting the city's money will be the goals that the staff who will be having to approve these policies will have in mind.
So all these people have to approve? The department head, human resources director, city attorney, and the city manager? All four of those folks have to agree on this?
Right. Because we've had some individual variations, and we don't want those to reoccur or proliferate.
Okay.
There's no more questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, now consider recommendations of the assistant city attorney. Mr. Ives?
Mayor, council members, my pleasure to be the closing act tonight. And we're here to approve the substitution of collateral. Back in 2000, the city began the extension of its sanitary sewer system from the Elam Road interchange down to Buchanan Road. As an incentive to encourage the city to do that, the Farrow brothers, who owned property down there that they wanted to develop, agreed to guarantee that the city would receive at least $2 million over the next 20 years, that it would come in in the form of $100,000 a year, minimum receipts, to Water and Sewer Department from the sale of taps from that area. And the Farrow brothers, as I said, they guaranteed that the city would receive at least $100,000 a year for 20 years. They secured that guarantee with a deed of trust on a farm down there, about 130 acres, which is part of what they were developing and in what is now the, I guess, Buchanan, part of Buchanan Estates, the subdivision that is ongoing down there. Water and Sewer created a district, I believe it was called the BISA District, the Buchanan Interchange Sanitary Sewer Special District. So anything that develops within that district, which is a lot more than the Farrow's property, but anything in that whole district counts toward fees being received with respect to that sewer system. So over the years, the Farrow's have come out of pocket several times to make, to match that, to make that $100,000 minimum. There have been some years when there was actually more than $100,000 sold, and it was credited toward the next year's minimum. And that, again, it's worked for 11 years now, and the city has collected $1,100,000 from that area. Fred Farrow, as you know, passed away a couple, three years ago. Charlie Farrow and Fred's widow, Mrs. Eleanor Farrow, are looking to now sell the property that's remaining down there at Buchanan that they own. They want to auction it off and get out of the development phase. They're perfectly happy to continue the guarantee that we get $100,000 a year for the next nine years, but they want the real estate to be released and to replace that with a different form of surety. After some discussions, what seemed to be the best way was to get a $900,000 letter of credit. They have obtained that from a bank. I don't have the original of it yet, but expect to get it either tomorrow or Monday. If enough taps are sold to make the $100,000 minimum during this next year, then that letter of credit will reduce by $100,000. If there's not enough sold, and if the Farrow's don't come forth when they get the invoice and make up the minimum, then we'll have that letter of credit that we can call on to make sure we get the minimum. So the, to accomplish this, then, we have a First Amendment to contract. The contract from 2000 has a provision in it that calls for this collateral. So we're amended, amending that contract to change the collateral from the real estate deed of trust to a letter of credit. Then there'll be a collateral substitution agreement, which says we'll release the real estate, and they'll give us a letter of credit. Then there'll be a full release of lien without satisfaction of debt, so that when we actually get the letter of credit in our hands, we'll give them the release, they can record the release. Then that property will be free and clear for them to auction it off. We think this makes sense. It helps them out in a situation where they're wanting to liquidate some things. I believe that a letter of credit gives us good collateral, good security for the debt. And again, it is a, it's a guaranteed minimum. If the economy continues to go the way it is for nine more years, there's a good chance they'll, they won't have to pay anything. If it doesn't, we've got assurance that we're going to collect at least $100,000 a year out of that sewer project. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
There's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
You have several beer permits in front of you. Ms. Wright?
We do. We have, one is a correction of an error on application for a special event from Oakland's Association. As many nonprofits do, if they have known events, they try to fill out an application with several events on the application to save money on the fee for the application. And they made an error in the year on one of them. So this first one is one you approved originally on July 30th, and they were asking to change the date to coincide when the event will actually be. The next one is a special event application from the Discovery Center. And as you can see, they have three events here listed for this year and some fall into next year. And both of these applications meet our requirements, and we would recommend approval of those if you so choose. The next one is a nightclub bar at 2435 South Church Street. It's an on-premise retail permit, and it is still lacking the final building inspections. When those are complete, the rest of the background findings meet our standards, so we would recommend that one for approval. And then we have four from the same company who is buying current locations of other companies for a grocery market that will be an off-premise retail permit. And the locations are 2125 Northwest Broad, 110A John Rice Boulevard, 1411 South Church Street, and 1304 Northwest Broad. All four of these are still lacking their building code inspection, final inspections, and we would also like to issue those permits if you approve those once they have completed those inspections successfully.
Not sure how I noticed this, but it shows John Jewell and William Kimbrough as females. Where?
It certainly does. I have a feeling that was a typo on behalf of my staff, and I take responsibility for not noticing that.
No, I just want to make sure it's not part of the, it would mean the other risk of the check would be right.
Both of those individuals are male, yes.
Yeah, but it would be the other part of the check is not.
Yes, those, as you can see, we do that locally with our court, and then we also do a TBI, FBI check.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure it's pulling from the right database.
Yes.
Okay.
That was probably copied from a previous application and just didn't catch that.
Gotcha. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
No board and commission appointments? Any statements to be paid? Ms. Wright?
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay, good. Do any other business from the staff or the council?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know every time we talk about something in Parks and Recreation, it always seems to be a Ballpark's a million and a half dollars, and Mile of Greenways a million dollars and stuff like that. But I'm just talking about a few dollars here. I would like for us to implement a study to consider building a ballpark at Barfield Park. We've got about 600 acres out there. The ballpark that we've got is, at minimum, overcrowded. And we're at capacity on that. And I think with that much land out there, surely we can find some fencing and put up out there and add a new ballpark to our city.
Be glad to work with Parks and Recreation and identify some costs or something like that. I know it's been wildly successful.
Great idea. We did have a letter that was sent to you on the city attorney search. If there's any comments or questions, please send those back, hopefully by next Thursday. And by all means, this week was a long week on going through all the interviews. And so if the council has any input on that, please do not hesitate to send that on. All right, seen no other business? One, two things. September 2nd, we do have our Murfreesboro 2035 consultants that are in town. We've got a meeting that night at 5:30 to talk about parkland analysis. Is that right, Mr. Lawrence?
Actually, the consultant will be here to present the draft of Chapter Four, which is the Future Land Use Plan.
Okay.
That one is a very important part of the comprehensive plan. So they'll present that to the task force. We're going to, you know, ask the planning commission members, they're certainly welcome to attend. The council's welcome to attend as well as the public. They'll make a presentation of the city council that evening, I mean, the planning commission that evening.